Uh, calling to order the, uh, planning commission subdivision committee regular meeting for Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty. Can we get a roll call?
Chair Andre.
Here.
Vice Chair Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Quilty.
Here.
Commissioner DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Low.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
And Commissioner South volcanic.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead and have, uh, everybody stand for the, uh, pledge of allegiance. Flag up. Hey, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Item number four is, uh, oral communications. Do you guys need me to read through this?
No, do you? Rise.
Pardon me? Okay. Uh, so we can go to the approval of the minutes then, number five? Uh, this, this is the approval of the minutes. Sorry, go ahead.
And move approval of the minutes.
I'll second it for April twenty-second.
Which, yeah, which minute?
This is April twenty-second, two thousand twenty.
I think there's a, I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, at the end, it said, uh, after the vote, it said carried six oh. I think it should be six one.
But, uh, I mean, according to this, uh, no, this is January twenty-second, so April twenty-second. Just want to make sure everybody was there.
Yeah, right below it is the vote.
Yeah.
Right.
Fun.
So I abstained. But that was, that was actually.
It should be one day, no matter what.
Yeah, for the, for the daycare and the housing.
We had seven for, for April. We, we did have, are you talking about the, the, the vote for it?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I think they're probably knowing that.
I thi- I believe so when I read the minutes.
Well, it's right there, like, uh, it's right below, it's the roll calls right there, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's six one.
That's page six of seven, it should be six to one, carry six to one, not six to zero.
Correct, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second with that change?
Right.
Uh, can we get a roll call?
Right, so it was Commissioner DeBolt and Vice Chair Gross.
Yes.
Chair Andre.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Quilty.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBolt.
Aye.
Commissioner Low.
Aye.
Commissioner Riley.
Aye.
And Commissioners South volcanic.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, so now we can go ahead and move to, uh, approve the minutes for July twenty-second, two thousand twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Chair Andre.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Quilty.
Abstain.
Commissioner DeBolt.
Aye.
Commissioner Low.
Aye.
Commissioner Riley.
Aye.
And Commissioner South volcanic.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, okay, um. After that, uh, we have, uh, I believe the consent calendar, there's nothing. Item seven, public hearing, none. And eight is a staff report. And if we could get a report on this, uh, topic, item A, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Training.
Yes, uh, Chair Andre and, uh, Commissioners, uh, this is, uh, uh, we give these kind of, uh, lectures to different groups, usually it's just, uh, city employees, uh, that we talk about this with, but it's, it's, uh, something that we're supposed to, to spend, uh, uh, more time doing in talking to, to students in the public or whatever, but it's about the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, which is NPDES. And, uh, NPDES, uh, the storm water that goes into your, the storm drains out in the street. Next page. Here we go. Okay, so why a presentation, and it's to remind folks to, to take care of our beaches and ocean. And to ensure that your own daily activities don't result in, uh, storm drain pollution. And according to the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, forty percent of waters are not fishable or swimmable in the U.S. And, uh, eighty percent of ocean pollution is from land runoff in the U.S. Uh, next page. Uh, and as you see on most storm drains, uh, we've spray painted all storm drain lead to the ocean. That's, uh, a requirement by, uh, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. You'll see what happens when things do go to the ocean, this here is Seal Beach in February two thousand nineteen. Uh, this is actually a pretty clean, uh, mess compared to what I've seen in the past there. Um, I used to surf there all the time and there would be really, uh, two or three feet of, of stuff there when it rained. Uh, next page. There's more pictures of it, next page. So, what I don't understand is there are two separate sewers. There's the sewer that comes out of your house and gets cleaned by the, 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 the plants that clean it. And then there is the sewer pipe in the street which goes straight to the ocean, it's not cleaned at all. Uh, they're both often called sewers, one is a storm drain though, the one that goes straight to the ocean is the, the storm drain. And everything else that generally goes down, um, drains is, uh, uh, regular drains i- in your kitchen or if you have a garage. They drain water out of that, usually goes in the sewer, uh, and is cleaned at the sewage plant. Uh, next page. So here's a little bit about the background of NPDES. Uh, the Clean Water Act happened in nineteen seventy-two. And that regulates the pollutants that go to the ocean. And, uh, it required the NP, the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, to create NPDES, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. And, uh, the, the, uh, Clean Water Act crea- uh, said that there has to be created an NPDES. And that was created in nineteen seventy. And, uh, then each individual section of the country had to have their, their local, um, NPDES section. And first, uh, is, uh, called the MS four permit, uh, uh, the group who does it is the Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board, and they have a permit with the city and all the other cities, uh, that are connected with them. Where we have to make sure that, uh, what we send to the ocean is clean. And the permit is them allowing us to actually send water to the ocean. If we send it to the ocean dirty, then we are breaking our permit and they will make us something to clean up. And you'll notice that last year, we, we put in, uh, screens in all of our storm drains, uh, on the outside, and then later on, we'll have to do other kinds of screening as well. So, next page. But, uh, here at, uh, the city, we have certain documents that we make, uh, different, uh, projects, uh, fill out in order to make sure that the project is clean. When somewhat, when a construction happens, a lot of dirt is made to be loose and it, uh, when it rains, it pours straight into the storm drain and goes out to the ocean. And so we, we have them do this storm water provo- pollution prevention plan if they're over one acre. And it's, it's just another page in their, their blueprints that shows what they're going to do. They usually put fencing around the, the property. They put wattles, which are those, uh, bales, little round bales that you see around the edges of all the properties, uh, that are being built. And then, uh, if they're less than an acre, it's, uh, a water pollution control plan. And that, that, uh, people do, when it's less than an acre, it's usually just regular homes, I think. I mean, a single family home and small projects. And, uh, they also have to do an erosion and sediment control plan. So, uh, there's a lot of things that they have to do to, in order to make sure they're clean for, uh, going, what they track out of the, the property when they're doing a construction project. And then after the project's over, um, now every single thing that is built that's over five thousand square feet, uh, uh, I mean, it covers over five thousand square feet of ground, has to have a water quality management plan. And that is, uh, has BMPs. And those, um, uh, have, uh, ways of infiltrating the water on the land rather than going to the storm drain. Is my, uh, voice cracking up on the phone? I mean, on the.
A little bit.
Yeah, let me turn off the fan. Okay. So, uh, uh, all the new places that are built now have a WQMP. And they're supposed to, uh, make sure all of the BMPs infiltrate the water into the ground on the property. They make sure those are clean, uh, from time to time. Uh, next page. Here's some examples of the way things are supposed to be done, you often don't see them done this way when a construction project is happening. Uh, if it's going to rain, you need to cover it with a tarp, uh, dirt, uh, piles or sand or whatever it is that you have and put sandbags around it, believe it or not, you have to, you're supposed to do that. And unfortunately, it's a very large ticket if you don't do it and, and, uh, the county permit people come, come around and, and they spot that you've done this. It's a very expensive ticket. And, uh, you'll also notice around construction sites, they cover the storm drain like on the right top. Um, and that's, uh, just, uh, the, uh, fil- I mean, the fa- uh, landscape fabric with, uh, uh, sandbags around it. And those are actually not sand in those bags, it's gravel. And then, uh, the bottom left, uh, just if, if you're, uh, dumping stuff on the street, you need to put plastic under it. And then, uh, bottom right's self-explanatory. Okay, next one. And then here are the things that are legal to discharge into the stormwater. When I was a kid, everyone used to change their oil by, uh, raining the oil out of their car and then pouring it down the storm drain. That was a, a normal practice and, uh, of, uh, no one knew that it was actually going straight to the ocean. But now we do. And, uh, so natural springs and groundwater, of course, can go into the, to the storm drain. Flows from wetlands, uncontaminated groundwater, which is like rain. Uh, flows from firefighting, of course, because you can't stop fighting fires. Uh, drinking water can go down the storm drain, so if you're pouring out a, a, a bottle of drinking water, that's fine. Uh, drains for fountains, footings and crawl spaces, those are, uh, like if you have a sump pump to pump out your, um, basement, if you happen to have one or a crawl space that's deep. Uh, air conditioning condensate, you can't stop that from happening, so that's okay to go. Uh, and if you discharge your swimming pool, you're supposed to make sure that it is pH neutral. So you, uh, the, uh, pH before you drain it out and drain it into the storm drain. Once all the, the, uh, uh, it's pH neutral. So, uh, basically the stuff that you put into chlorine and all that goes away after a certain period of time, usually two to three weeks. Uh, you can drain decorative ponds and fountains, uh, and, uh, non-commercial, uh, car washing by residents or nonprofits is, is, uh, uh, legal to do, uh, to discharge. Uh, next page.
If I could interrupt.
Sure.
The discharge into the storm drain, how does that, for, for instance, if it's on your property, on your house property, how does that get to the storm drain?
Um, uh, off of your property, if it, uh, well, I'll tell you about that in a minute, we have some pictures. Uh, you're probably thinking of curb coring. Uh, most people try to do that. And curb coring is actually illegal. Uh, you're not supposed to send the water off of your land into the storm drain, you're supposed to, uh, build like a little, uh, box before it gets to the, to the street that it collects in and slowly filters out the bottom.
Gotcha.
If the rain becomes overwhelming, it can go to the top of it and then just sheet flow into, uh, the storm drain.
Okay.
Um, let's see, so, uh, an illegal discharge is a discharge from a waterway that is not composed of storm water or a condition, or is conditionally allowed, which, uh, means that, uh, you get permission from the permit people to do it. Um, and there are certain businesses that are allowed to do that. They come from, of course, spills, industrial processes and the ci- uh, city employees, we have to go to all of the industrial properties, um, uh, once a year, we usually do the, the, uh, the more dirty types of industrial operations once a year. And then the other ones we do every other year. And we go around and we look and see they're pouring oil on the ground or, or, uh, you know, stacking dirt without having a place for it to go when it rains. So, uh, next page. So here are some examples of, uh, illegal discharges. You'll see that that's a dumpster on the left, just, uh, it's leaking, so that's going in there. Uh, we've had some, uh, industrial sites that in the past, uh, w- one of them, uh, dumped three tons of peanut butter into, uh, one of the storm drains and they had to steam clean the whole drain. Uh, so that was, that was really hard to deal with. Uh, then there's, of course, people wash their paintbrushes, that's not supposed to go in the storm drain. Uh, when you put in the new sidewalk and you're cleaning off the cement, uh, you're watering it down, you're supposed to collect that water and not send it straight into the storm drain. Uh, or block it in and then use this, uh, uh, what was I trying to say? Uh, the vacuum, you know, the, the industrial vacuum cleaners, the, what's it called, wet vac?
Like a shop vac, yeah.
Yeah, you're supposed to wet vac it up, so. And then the, uh, bottom left, you can see there's oil in the water there that, of course, can't go down. And then when you see construction sites just washing down the street to clean up what the mess they've made, they're not allowed to do that. They, uh, have to put, uh, either wattles around it and, uh, collect the water or, um, have a vacuum truck that goes behind it and vacuums up the water. So it's, it's a pretty intense process for builders now, for this stuff. Uh, next page. And then here's what an illicit connection is. These are what people do usually at their homes. And, uh, everyone has done it, uh, we, we all do this. Now have to stop doing it, and that's doing curb cores or putting pipes to your landscaping with those little drains that send it to the third floor. And a curb core is a hole in the, the, uh, curb that lets water out of your lawn. And, uh, you're supposed to infiltrate it all on your own land, not send it to the. Uh, and then some people put in those little, uh, uh, river rock rivers and stuff with, uh, la- plastic underneath it and send the water off of their property, that's, that's illegal. There's no end to the illegal stuff. And, uh, then, uh, yeah, that's that page, let's go on to the next page. Here's some examples, this is someone on the left pouring, uh, pool water into the storm drain. It may be, uh, uh, ju- just temporary and they may be sending clean water, but there are some pools in this town that a- a- are hooked up to the storm drain system, their drain is, and it's not supposed to go in the storm drain system, but there was a time when, uh, they were allowed to do that. And, uh, s- some of them, there's some people today still have those kinds of, uh, pool drain.
Storm drain, storm drain or sewers?
Storm, the storm drain, some go to the storm drain, but they're supposed to go to the sewer.
Right, okay.
Yeah. And then that, that on the bottom right is, uh, on, on the right is, that's what I'm talking about. You go all through this town, they're everywhere. And then also people used to put the back of their property into the Coyote Creek and to the, uh, uh, sewers, I mean, the public works drains and stuff around town. They would, uh, curb, I mean, core through the edge of that and send a pipe out, and that's illegal now. And they'll come around and tell you to take it out, is what they'll do. Uh, next page. And if you want more information about this, um, you go to, uh, H two O C dot org. And that's an O C, not, not a zero C. And, uh, that is where you'll find out what's legal, what's not legal, if you have questions. Or they also have examples of how to, to say, to infiltrate the water on your own property rather than sending it to the ocean. And, uh, also if you go to our website, you'll see that, that symbol that's in the middle of your page, the H two, H two O, Los Alamos, you just click that and it'll take you to that site. And I think that's it, go, try one more page, let's see if there's any more. Nope, that's it. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Tom. Any, any questions? Pretty self-explanatory, I think.
Yeah.
All right, excellent. Uh, great, recommendation is none on that, so we'll move on to item nine, which is, uh, discussions, there are none. We have no, item ten, items from the Development Services Director, do we have anything?
Um, I want to check with Tom, you have anything for them, Tom?
No, um, we, uh, of course, uh, the, uh, people keep calling us and telling us that, you know, the restaurants are out, uh, doing outdoor dining and, and wondering if they have permits for what they're doing. Most of them do and we're, we're going through them and talking to them, it's a free permit. We just send out the building inspector to check and make sure the tents not fly away if there's a windstorm. So wanted to let you know that we a- actually are on top of that, just some restaurants ignore us, that, that's the way I go.
Michael, do you have anything?
I don't, thank you.
Okay. Um, I just have a few items here, um, I just want to just give an update, but Epson is cranking away. Um, they should be moved into their building the day after Labor Day, so it's coming up, which is September, I believe, is eight. Uh, but you won't see all their employees coming in right now, um, they notified us that only ten percent of their employees are actually working in the office because, again, the ninety other percent are, um, working remotely or telecommuting from home. But, uh, they are going to be in on September eighth, that is the plan right now. And, um, another thing I want to mention is, uh, the Recreation Community Services Department is doing an event called Zip Code Day. So what is Zip Code Day? The zip code for Los Alamos is nine zero seven two zero. So September seventh twenty is coming up, which is, happens to be Labor Day as well. So they're doing some events, so one of the events they're doing is called Bike and Bites. So they went out and solicited some restaurants, um, to, uh, sell, um, food at a discounted rate. And so you gotta go online, um, you can go visit the website, but you go to Eventbrite, you buy tickets. And then you go get the tickets and you go buy at the restaurants that are participating. So the restaurants keep fifty percent of the proceeds and then the other fifty percent comes to the Recreation Community Services Department Scholarship Fund. So, um, it, it's similar to, have you ever been to Long Beach to stroll and save? Where you can walk from restaurant to restaurant, they'll give like little, um, plates of food and you, uh, purchase tickets ahead of time. So again, that is on, uh, September seventh from three to seven. And at the end of the night, over at the Los Alamos Youth Baseball Field, there will be a drive-in concert. The band is called Flyers, and I, uh, I'm, I'm hearing that they're a local band, they play a lot at Griffin's Grill. And then, um, uh, the concert begins at, I believe it's eight PM, and again, it's over at the Los Alamos Youth Baseball Field. So if you do want to come out to the concert, you do have to reserve a ticket. So again, please visit the city's website, there's more information, they'll tell you how to reserve a ticket and how to purchase tickets for, um, the Bike and Bites. Um, and I guess the last thing I want to mention is, uh, we're underway, um, the city council voted to put a, uh, one point five cent sales tax measure on the November third ballot. So again, go to the city's website, uh, it's Measure Y, it's called, and you can get more information about the measure on the city's website, okay? That is it for my reports.
Excellent, thanks. Any questions? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Reports, do we have any?
I just wanted to mention that Ron didn't, you didn't say anything about, uh, Serve Los Al, but you can go on the website for Serve Los Al for September eleventh and twelfth. They are doing things and they're trying to do it, um, everybody being outside so that they're protected from COVID. And then from the Running Commission, right now I know that everybody in the cities, the businesses are being impacted because of the COVID. We have a lot of banners up, but somewhere down the road too, once everything resolves, then everything gets back to normal and they get caught up. Are we going to be able to readdress those so that they're not up too long?
So first off, thank you, uh, there is Serve Los Al coming up, so it is a big event, uh, there's a lot of, uh, events going on for Serve Los Al, again, go visit the city's website, I know they have a pet expo going on. Uh, we were partnering up with the Republic Services, uh, they're actually coming out with, uh, two twenty-yard bins to offer residents, uh, uh, basically free dumping day. You could bring your, um, stuff to dump in the dumpsters, that will be at Saint Isidore. And again, there's a lot of activities for Serve Los Al, uh, including the, um, um, the service projects per se. Uh, and to address, uh, the second one, Commissioner Gross, uh, yes, we will, we are drawing up a letter and we're giving, um, businesses because of what's going on COVID nineteen. Once we figure out that date where maybe, uh, again, I don't know, but, uh, we do have a letter prepared to go out there to, uh, give, um, businesses, uh, approximately fourteen to thirty days to, uh, take their banners down or, or, um, apply for a temporary banner permit. So yes, we, we're, we're in that process of, uh, you know, doing all that, correct?
Okay, that's all.
Okay, I, I have an item I'd like to, uh, record on, uh, at our last meeting, I made a request to the city attorney, uh, regarding our approval of the, uh, apartment project on the Monty Collins property. And in particular, uh, the requirement about, that we had, uh, included in our motion to record a, a notification right after the, uh, as soon as possible after the appeal period was up on our approval. Uh, we all got the letter, I want to thank the city attorney, that, I mean, it's a great letter, it lays it out clearly, uh, what happened, um. Uh, I'm not too happy about what happened, but I can see, uh, the point that was made, that there's not a whole lot we can do about it, you know, at this point. Uh, however, that raises another question, and it was brought up in the, in the city attorney's letter. In particular, it's, it's in the last, the last paragraph of the letter. And it has to do with, uh, uh, condition number eighty-two, assuring us that that remains in effect, you know, which, which is good. Uh, and what I would like to do, uh, I would like to have, uh, an item on our next agenda where we can bring back, just to discuss, uh, item, item eighty-two. Uh, uh, that, that particular condition, along with, I believe, condition number seventy-four. Um, at least it's number seventy-four on our original agenda report that we worked on, I don't know if the numbering changed, but the staff can look that up. That, that, uh, item has to do with, uh, the, uh, presence of a vapor barrier and recorded notice for the future residents regarding the vapor barrier. I'd like those two items, those two conditions to come back, uh, just for a discussion, not any type of action, or at least not it, you know, on it, but just that we could discuss that in detail so that, uh, we can maybe, uh, try to avoid the same, uh, slow roll or whatever by the developer with our city staff where they kind of, you know, kind of ran the clock out, as the city attorney said, uh, on, on that one, uh, condition that we had imposed. So, that's my request, is that we, uh, have on our agenda at our next meeting, a discussions of those two items, those two conditions that we can review and, and then if we decide we want to do something, then schedule that for, I guess, a regular meeting or whatever, uh, beyond that. But just, at this point, just so we can discuss this further, which we can't do right now.
The last thing we can have done is put that on the agenda?
Yeah, the, at this point, uh, we can receive the comments from the.
Yeah, the, at this point, uh, we can receive the comments from the commissioners. Understand that a request has been made to bring back the item for full discussion. Uh, but as Commissioner DeBolt has suggested, because it wasn't agendized for full discussion this evening, uh, we're, we're not really in a position to go into depth on this one.
Correct.
I like that. I like that.
You don't vote on that to make it an agenda item at this point?
I'm all for voting on it. If we want to, whatever.
I don't, I don't know that we need to.
Unless we don't need it, I don't care.
Put on the agenda.
Michael, is that, I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, we, we can, it, it could go either way. I think based on what we've heard, we can take direction and bring it back at this point.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I'd like to add to that, please.
Go ahead, Nick.
Okay, yeah, I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner DeBolt and, uh, with regard to the city attorney. Thank you for the letter, Michael. I read the letter. Um, I had some questions and comments, but as you said, it's not agendized, so I can save those till, uh, we meet with the agendized item. But I'd like to, uh, ask Tom, uh, for that agendized item meeting to bring, uh, the resolution specifically, um, sections seventy-three and seventy-four on page fifteen. And also is there, uh, it, again, I won't, want to, in, to discussion, but um, regarding the vapor barriers, is there some documentation as to the fact that they were in fact installed and that they were installed properly? Uh, who, who makes that determination? Is there, is a building safety inspector report or something like that? It could be brought to the next meeting when we have this discussion? Because, uh, I, I read Michael's letter and, um, again, I don't want to get too deep into it because it's not agendized, but I think that we do have recourse here. Um, and, uh, I'll explain my, my position on that at, at the meeting, but I'd like to have the resolution, any building safety or whatever agency uh, oversaw the installation of the vapor barriers and that they were done properly, their notes and anything else that you deem relevant. Maybe a staff report to follow it.
Okay.
Did we get that, um, information?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
And, and I have, we, if we finished with that request, I have an additional report.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Uh, as you all know, I was selected to appear on the, uh, committee, community advisory committee. Uh, the Act of Transportation Plan. I've been contacted by Brenda Sivantes of the, of that, uh, of that agency or that committee. And we are going to meet this Friday. It'll be a Zoom meeting, uh, this Friday, August twenty-eighth. So I will be reporting to the, uh, commission, um, anytime there's something to report, uh, so they're up to date on what's going on.
Excellent, thanks. Perfect. Um, anything else? All right, hearing nothing further than I think, uh, we are set. This meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for, uh, the participation. And maybe one of these, one of these months, we'll, uh, actually be able to, uh, meet again, not on a camera.
Yeah.
All right, well, take care, everybody. We'll see you, uh, hopefully see you or talk to you within, uh, next month.
All right.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks, everybody.